Good evening and welcome to the March 26, 2019 Millis Public Schools School Committee Meeting. This, I'll start with a roll call vote. My name is Stephen Catalano. I'm the chairperson. Carrie Roach, secretary, is absent tonight. Ms. Briggs.
Here.
Mr. Conroy.
Here.
Ms. Gibbons.
Here.
Teacher rep Bernadette Lindgren.
Here.
And student rep Dory Stefano.
Here.
And the superintendent, Ms. Gustafson, is here as well. This meeting, I'd like to announce that this meeting is being recorded and can be viewed on Mondays at 7:00 PM on Comcast Channel 8 or Verizon Channel 37. All meeting videos are also posted to the Millis Public Schools website under School Committee, and all times on the agenda are approximate. Jody, is there anyone signed in for open session?
Yes, one person.
Okay.
Mary Ann Dambler.
Good evening.
Shall I speak into the microphone or do I need to?
Yes, because it's going to be recorded by the camera, sure.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. My name is Mary Ann Dambler, president of the Teachers Association, Millis Teachers Association. I'm here with Patsy Diver, representative from the high school. And we're here today to speak on behalf of the members and of our association. And I'm here for, we have a letter to present to you. And basically, it's about seeking information about the transfer, the transition, excuse me, of students and staff to the new Clyde F. Brown building that will be open next year. The Millis Teachers Exec Board has asked many of our members here today, as you can see in the audience, they're with us tonight, so that the committee can see the faces that will be affected by this move and who are seeking guidance as to how to best plan for the 2019, 2020 academic year. Just this afternoon, Superintendent Gustafson was able to share some positive news with me regarding updates to the budget, and which as of today, lessens but not ridges the needs of staffing cuts. So, our members, therefore, are still struggling with the uncertainties, and that is why we're here tonight. So, I have copies of the letter, but I'll just read it. It's rather brief. So, "Dear Chairman Catalano, Earlier this month, the Association requested specific information from Superintendent Gustafson regarding the teacher assignments and schedule for the 2019-2020 academic year. We were told, due to the budget situation, that these assignments will not be made till closer to the end of the school year. This prompted many rumors, mixed messages, and much frustrations among our members. It is now almost April, and we feel the end of the year, school year is upon us. Our current 5th grade team, our unified arts teachers, special education staff, and other members who are affected by this move really do need to know their placements for next year in order to plan an effective transition. If reductions in force are coming to any member of our teaching staff, our members need to explore their options in a timely manner. Our district-wide teachers and specialists serve multiple schools, thus changes to our schedules impact their curriculum and their caseload. That said, our members are available to meet with building principals and other administrators to assist with scheduling. The Association appreciates the efforts being taken to minimize the impact of next year's budget, yet many of our members are understandably anxious and fail in the weight of these uncertainties. In order to streamline communication between the administration and the Association during this major transition, I will request weekly meetings with Superintendent Gustafson to share ideas and keep members informed as assignments are made in accordance with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed licensure guidelines and our own collective bargaining agreement. I provided my contact information. You know how to reach me. That is all I have."
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. You go. Wait, would you like this to charge?
Thank you.
Oh, did you want a, um, the needle copy right now?
That's fine, if you have an extra, that's.
Oh, I have, yeah, I actually made copies for, since I need to keep the copies. Oh, okay. There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mary Ann, thanks. Thank you.
More continues for you. Actually, there is an issue. All right, moving on to action items. We actually have no, we have no action items. Student rep, Dory, do we have anything?
Yes. Senior projects are continuing to take place inside and outside of school, including fundraising and school improvements and therapy dogs. Sophomores are taking the MCAS today and tomorrow. The new chairs are being installed in the auditorium. Students are being asked to register for their 2019-2020 class schedules starting today into early April. Band and chorus are having their solo ensemble concert on April 9. Term 3 will end this Friday, and the Millis Theater Group is putting on a production of Annie this weekend, starring several students.
Thank you. Teacher rep.
Wednesday, 8/3rd is a half day for all students. Teachers will have professional development in the second half of the day. Clyde Brown has senior, Howley brought over the, uh, Millis High School, excuse me, pep band to the Clyde Brown to highlight the extension music program and to entertain the 3rd and 4th graders during their lunch. On Friday, March 22nd, the school had the pleasure of opening their Times Capsule from 1954, and the school celebrated having a 50's spirit day. On Saturday, April 6th, the Clyde Brown community will have a giveaway day from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM, where the community can explore gently-used items the staff no longer need. And on Tuesday, April 9th, Clyde Brown will be having a Red Sox Spirit Day to celebrate the season opener. And the ELA MCAS dates are happening for 4th, 9th, at April 4th, April 9th, then April 10th. Grades 3 are April 4th, April 23rd and April 24th. Can't read, sorry. Middle school. Next Tuesday, author Ally Condi will visit the Millis Middle School. They'll have an assembly at noon for grades 6 through 8. And their 8th and 9th grade step-up night will be April 4th, 6:30, 6 to 6:30 PM. There are clubs that are available for the rising 8th grade, or not, rising 9th grade students. Parents of students are welcome. They can check out those, as well as listen to the presentation in the auditorium. And that just teaches them more about the high school and their students' transition to the high school. Friday, April 5th, is the 10th Annual Wax Museum, and that will be held in the gym. And please come and visit the 5th grade presentation of famous people. That'll happen between 8:00 and 10:30 AM. For the high school, MBCMA took 11 students into Boston last week for the annual Youth and Government Conference. And at the State House, the students participated in mock trials. Their, our team won 2 out of 3 cases, successfully lobbied on mock bills to get them passed through the committee and in the House chamber. Also, 3 of our delegates' bills passed committee and went to the House floor. Of course, these 2 passed into state law. And 4 Metro West scholarships are available in the school Guidance Council office, and you can get applications, there are other applications for other scholarships in the basket in there. Most deadlines are by April 15th, so students are urged to do this soon. And the 15th Annual Lights, Camera, Action Conference is April 3rd. That's next Wednesday. There are many wonderful speakers, and hundreds of students are registered to attend. The TV production films have been selected for the Sign Student Film Festival in Illinois, the IUPFF in Pennsylvania, the Metro West Film Festival, the Salem Film Festival. Films selected are Crushing It by Morgan Cain, T.J. Horrigan, Jackie Malali, Abby Miller, and that one, or they were the winners of the Sign Fest. The 80 Pounds by Hadley McPhee, with cinematography by Gavin Arthur and Nathan Lipsy. And Memorial Day by Adriana. The Latin American Dance, also by Adriana. Tea by Josh White, a PSA for YouTube burn awareness contest placed in the top 5. These are students who produced it. It's Michael Lund, Cody Rossi, Peter Zankione, James Wurz, Tyler Glasco, and Zach Wood.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is time and learning, and Mr. Weiss, the, energy, energy manager. Would you like to come up, sir? You want to talk to us about the green community. All right. Big audience tonight.
Yeah. Good crowd. Thank you very much. Bob Weiss, I'm the energy manager for the town. And before I give you my, I've got a very quick update for you on the Green Communities Program. I do want to thank you, I want to thank the committee and the administration for helping us with the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Program, and also with our Open Space and Recreation Plan update. So, we will have a public meeting coming up on May 9th on the OSRP. I want to thank, I want to thank Jody also for getting the survey that's out on the List Serve. It's a pretty easy survey to fill out for the Open Space and Recreation Plan, and that will become part of the plan, so please do fill it out. We've had a great response so far. It's very easy to fill out. So, as I mentioned, I came here tonight just to update everybody on the Green Communities Program. As you know, last couple of years, we've been pretty successful as a green community. Last year, we installed new variable frequency drives for the hot water system here in the high school for both hot water and heat, so we should, we, and before that, we installed controls for the walk-in refrigerator. So, that's, it's about $18,000, $19,000 worth of energy savings every year. This year, we have submitted an application to the Department of Energy Resources, the Green Communities Division, for $219,000 worth of work for 5 projects. 3 of those projects will be, we hope, if they accept at all, will be here in the high school. We'll be replacing these lights on the first floor, throughout the first floor, a few outside. We'll be updating them with much more efficient lighting. We have 50 faucets throughout the boys, boys and girls bathrooms that we will replace. And we're also going to plug up a lot of the holes in the envelope of the building. So, doors that need weather stripping penetrations, like of pipes and such that need to be sealed, and some holes that have developed where the walls of the building, where the exterior walls of the building meet the foundation. With those 3 jobs, 3 major projects, really, we've looking, we are looking at about $25,000 worth of energy savings in gas, electric, but also in water. We'll be saving over 500,000 gallons of water every year. It's an amazing amount of water that is being, being wasted. So, that's, that's about it, and thank you very much for your support over the, over the last few years.
Thanks, Bob. Thanks for the update. At this time, I'd like to trans, open the meeting to a budget hearing. This is going to be the FY '20 budget hearing. The superintendent is going to present. At the end of her presentation, the committee will be, can ask questions, and if there are people in the audience that would like to come up and ask, or make a statement, or ask a question, they're entitled to do that, and those questions or statements will be directed to the chair, and then we will address them.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nettie.
It's amazing and wonderful to see people because this is a very key piece of our budget process. We, every year develop a proposed budget that includes our needs, and that happens starting in December with the administrative team. You can see our process here, December, January, getting input from everybody of what those needs might be. We develop a draft in light of the governor's budget, and we start to get projected town revenue. This year, the town revenue process has been different than usual because we have a new town accountant, and there's transitions. The consultant who was working last year is assisting, and we've had some delays there, but we're getting closer to knowing what the local revenue is. The preliminary budget that we pulled together is presented in a public hearing by law, and the school committee votes a proposed budget. Now, that goes through a series of changes in relation to the House, and then the Senate, and then House and Senate have to go to conference committee to come up with a final state budget. And you've probably been following along, I think, with the proposed changes to the foundation budget, that even though they're phased in over time, if any of those bills caught or passed, it could have, it could have a change for Millis. Not as much for Millis as for urban districts, but still, it would probably be a positive change, especially in things like circuit breaker and special education transportation reimbursement. So, that happens in March and May, and finally, we have a budget that I present to, well, I present to come next week, and the selectmen and the finance committee also are continuing their process, coming to, closer to what the revenue is that's available to the town and the schools. We have traditionally had a 65-35 split, where the schools get 65% of the available revenue once its costs are taken off the top. So, that gets voted at the May town meeting. At the May town meeting, that is our budget number. If changes happen in the House and Senate side and conference committee after that, then there's a discussion about whether the amount is large enough, is warranted to open the town budget again and have a, have another special town meeting, or just wait until November to address the, what is hopefully, additional revenue. So, that's our process. We go with some regular budget development premises that first and foremost, our mission is to meet the needs of students, always. We align to our strategic planning priorities. We try to be transparent and collaborative, maintain and improve our programming, which we always identify strengths in areas that need improvement. We have always prioritized, since I can't speak to before I was here, but since I've been here, prioritize staffing. You've heard me say it's staffing is where the rubber hits the road. It's because of our excellent staffing that Millis is able to do what it does with a very tight budget. Closely monitor the expenses and salaries and identify potential efficiencies, and we try to be proactive in looking ahead for future years. Some of our assumptions this year, again, the assumption is we must meet the needs of students. They are our priority. That's what our budget is built around. We are assuming, because of information at the federal level, that we might have a small decrease in grants. Last year, we had a decrease of $60,000 in our grants. So, we're monitoring that, and we assume there's going to be a little bit. We hope it's not a large reduction. We are assuming a current level of choice funding. Our projections are based on our current levels of participation in athletics, bus in preschool and kindergarten, and any other project-based programs. As you all know, we are focused on one main thing, and that is meeting the needs of students better by private, personalizing how we instruct and how they learn. So, along with that, we have, and we know, we have a culture of strong relationships with the students. We try to actively engage them. We emphasize effort, and a growth mindset. We do have exemplary programs and academic excellence, even on a low per pupil expenditure. We are focused on developing those 21st century skills that, with an emphasis on authentic project-based learning, real-world learning, and responsive and differentiated teaching. Our priorities for FY '20 and our focus on our core mission of personalization, and that's been, since I've been here, what we've been working on, and people are going deeper and deeper and getting better and better, and some marvelous things are happening. We also have been maximizing, trying to focus on the student well-being, social-emotional learning, the SEL, having more student engagement, voice and choice, the agency, building and robust and relevant 21st century learning. Many of the students have been really enjoying the Merit 3D mobile lab that we have, and that's been interesting and fun to watch, and providing more STEAM opportunities, such as our engineering course and the new computer science courses that we have in the program of studies at the high school level for next year. We always try to maintain a high, very high quality of instruction. We've been addressing facility needs and cleanliness there, and John Engler, a shout-out to him, who's doing a wonderful job in those areas. And because of the earmark grants we got, due to Representative Linsky, we've been able to do things like the auditorium and support from town meeting. So, the challenge is, we have about 250 students fewer, and I'll speak to this, than we did a few years ago, and that affects about 10,000 per pupil, our budget, what we get in Chapter 70, that's flowing into the town. We know we also still have inadequate athletic fields. We know social, emotional, and mental health issues are on the rise for all students across the nation. The lower enrollment, I've mentioned, is causing a drop in revenue, and we are also seeing increases in out-of-district tuitions. A couple of, of the private schools that our students attend for special needs, very specialized programs, have had 21% tuition increases for next year, and another one had 17%. The private schools are able to petition the state and just get, basically, those kind of tuition increases, which impacts what we have to pay. The state mandates, as always, we're expected to do more, always, in schools, in public education. There's curriculum alignment continuously happening, great work happening in social studies right now, and science. MCAS today was one of the first days that the high school went to like, electronic MCAS. That puts demands on our infrastructure, and also our personnel, and they apparently did a great job. Kudos to the tech department and the teachers. And word is that our students really had, they might not have loved it, MCAS, electronic MCAS, but that there were no issues because of the integration of technology across the curriculum. And unfortunately, even though we just finished a CPR review, we were chosen for the new process for another CPR review. That's a coordinated program review of civil rights, special education, facilities, make sure they're accessible, et cetera. So, we're having to go through that once again. Enrollment, I spoke to that. You can see the drop of 250 students, which results in about 2.5 million less in revenue. Class sizes, though, are very nice when you have lower enrollment. You can see that they range from around 18 up to around 23, and then at high school, because of the scheduling, we know we have some classes that are small, other classes, especially in social studies, that are around 30 students. School choice incoming, students coming into Millis because of our excellent education has gone up tremendously over the years, and that's a testament to what we're doing as a school district. School choice outgoing has remained relatively low. A little bit of an uptick this past year. What's really been significant is the outflow of kids to attending Tri-Town and Norfolk Day. That, you can see the increase there, total 66 of our students are now attending vocational schools, and that's, for each student that does, that's $17,000 off the top. We get about 10,000 per student, they get 17 because of their specialized machinery and equipment, et cetera, needed. So, that is something we've been working on and talking about, the engineering and computer science courses, that, that should help. We understand that for some kids, vocational education is very much the appropriate way to go, and we cannot offer that full range of programming. So, but on the other hand, we do know that we need to be more and more practical in offering things, especially in the STEM fields. Charter schools has been virtually steady over the years. Kindergarten homeschool has risen slightly, I, I believe with the economy, but you never know, and so it's, that's about steady. We did, if you noted the difference from last year, we found an error in last year's numbers, so we rectified that. It's been, the last 3 years has been pretty steady. About 9 of our students are homeschooled. And then our per pupil expenditure compared with surrounding counts, you see Millis in red compared to the state average. So, that state average, if we were to reach that, that would really be a tremendous boom to our, to our budget. Ranging from Holliston, Etllo on the, on the far end, Franklin, Medway, then Millis, Walpole, Medfield, Norfolk, and the state average. And then, of course, Sherburne, Westwood, and Dover, much higher. Those are our surrounding districts, but, and this is without our out-of-district tuition costs for special needs students. The, including out-of-district costs puts us, drops us down one place. We dropped below Medway, but still close. So, it's, it's comparable when we include our out-of-district costs, and that's $14,621 per pupil. That's based on last year's budget. That's how we get the comparable data. They don't have the data yet for, for this year, of course. So, then we compare to what we call, what are called the dark districts. When you go into the Department of Ed website, you can do dark district comparisons, and these are more comparable districts, smaller, with similar demographics to Millis. Lunenburg, Bridgewater, Sutton, Douglas, Abington, Georgetown, and Millis in red. Air, then the state average, whoop, that one is not, but it's a second to the right, and then Maynard is slightly above the state average. Trying to stay out of people's view, but. This is the percent of low-income students, families with low income compared with a mixture of surrounding communities and some dark communities. Hopkinton has 4.5%, Westwood, Medfield, Holliston, Georgetown about 8.8, then we have Walpole, Medway, Sutton, and Hope Dale about 10.9. Millis is 11.8%. They changed the formula a few years ago to determine this, but this has been standard for a couple of years. And then Ashland has 13%, Douglas, Lunenburg, Bellingham has 19%, Norton, and West Boylston. Of course, there are some districts that are very much higher than that. You've heard of it. You've heard of districts, I'm sure, that are 95% of their kids are low-income, but these are the comparable, kind of demographically ones to Millis. Special education trends is a success story in terms of number of IEPs in the district. Some of this is driven by lower enrollment because 250 kids fewer does change this, but you can see over the past four years, we've had a nice decline in the number of students that have required an IEP. And I attribute that to the tiers of interventions that we're doing in regular ed to meet students' needs. And then this is special education trend in terms of out-of-district tuition costs. You can see 1,350,000 of our budget roughly goes to out-of-district tuition costs. That increase has, we don't have more kids going out of district necessarily, that's been relatively steady, but the tuitions at those schools have gone up, especially this year. Out-of-district costs as a percent of our total special education costs, we are now at 37.4% of our total education. Now, we're doing a good job in keeping, you know, having fewer kids on IEPs, but the cost of out-of, so that's going down, the cost of out-of-district tuition is going up. So, for the past two years, seven years, we've had to make a lot of cuts. And our reductions, this is just some of the reductions, but we know where, we've tried to prioritize personnel, keep people, and we've cut year after year in the expenses category, prioritizing people. So in FY '16, we did have to cut some personnel because we had 636,000 worth of reductions. FY '17, another close to 300,000. '18 was okay, but actually, yes, '18 was okay, but this year for FY '19, again, we had to cut almost 425,000, and then we lost another 60,000 in grants. So considering, this is a reduction from our level staff, level service, proposed budget. So that's, these are reductions, you know, if we were to maintain level service, level staff, these are reductions from that. And you'll see what FY '20 is for that percent. This is the breakdown, about 66, two-thirds of our funding goes to teacher salaries, almost 10% to aides, tutors, and therapists, 2% to coaches, 2% transportation, almost 9% at administration, 3% technology, four, a little over 4% for clerks and secretaries, and then about 4% in maintenance. So, from last year's budget of $15,178,242, we determined what we need with the contracts for steps, lanes, and a cost of living adjustment. Now, many of our unions are in negotiations this year, so that is going to affect the cost of living number there. Then we have a shortfall in both kindergarten and preschool, those tuition-based programs. As salaries go up, we have not raised fees for 10 years. So those, when salaries increase, there's a shortfall that has to then be absorbed by the operational budget. We also lost the kindergarten grant that we used to have. We didn't lose it, it was cut from the state budget, so everybody lost it. And then we added 6,000 for increased summer help because we know with the move to the new Clyde Brown, there's going to be a need for increased student help, student and college student help to help with the move and help with the technology setup. So for a total salary increase of about $430,000, that is our district fixed costs in salaries. In expenses, we have an increase of $252,000 in out-of-district tuitions for next year. And that is mainly due to those tuition increases of 21,017, I mean, 21% and 17%. We, last year and this year, are able to prepay a lot of those tuitions, so there's an offset there because of the great job they're doing in trying to hold costs down there. We did put in a 2% inflationary increase in expenses since first so long we've been cutting into expenses. We have some required new expenditures, like the stormwater tax, a software program that's required to get our green energy credits, the CHIPS certification for the new Clyde Brown, and a couple other things, I'll show you that. And they anticipate that the new Clyde Brown will be more costly to run in general than the current building. Nobody can predict or know at this point what those costs will be, so they suggested that we put in a larger number than this. And we said, well, the old Clyde Brown's pretty inefficient and we think we're spending a lot on utilities there, so we're holding our contingency at about 50,000. For a total expenditure increase of 203,000 and a total overall increase of $633,000 to have a level staff, level service budget. So we know from the research that's been done for 35 years now that a high-performing organization in a school district like ours needs that solid, guaranteed, and viable curriculum, a clear vision with a professional development to support it, deep implementation of goals. It's been said that having more than three or four goals is like having none at all. So that's why we focused and we focused intentfully. And we've been doing great work on personalizing learning, meeting students' individual needs and being responsive to that. A highly qualified and respected staff, opportunities for collaboration among staff, which we've been working along, working on, trying to gain more common planning time, et cetera. And we need to support and challenge all students. Community and parent involvement, which we enjoy, a wonderful community here in Millis and parents. So that is, those are the things that add up to a high-performing school district. So, in light of that, we of course have some things we would, if budget were, if we were able to support it budget-wise, we would add and go along with the previous slide to reach that high-performing district and to continue to maintain that. We need, because of the increase in our young population, we need to increase the ECB by .2, from a .8 to a 1. We need to, we're proposing a bridge program that meets the needs of students transitioning back to Millis either for medical reasons or mental health reasons and have a bridge program that guidance and Dr. Marks and Mr. Malaney have been putting together, which would then keep more kids in district and hopefully avoid out-of-district tuition costs. We need to, we would like to beef up the summer programming for students that in order to have our wonderful tiers interventions continue during the summer and at the middle and elementary, and expand the tiers tutoring program at the middle school. The middle school doesn't yet have, you know, a reading specialist and the kinds of supports that we have at the elementary, and we'd like to build that. We are working on a transition program, which will also be a cost savings. Transition programs are for 18- to 22-year-olds, the students who have graduated, like the couple you know from last year. And we are responsible for their education until they're 22-years of age, and they are attending a program out of district right now. We're trying to build one in district, collaborating with another district that has the space and we have the ability to transport. So this is something that will yield significant savings because those two students could come back and we have three or four that are aging into that program. So we're very excited about that. We know our nurses are stretched and we are asking for at least some part-time support for, it says LPN, it doesn't have to be LPN, it's nursing services and support for nurses, which will also be able to assist in Medicaid billing. Medicaid billing, we're not capturing what we could for Medicaid, from Medicaid revenue, which brings in about, I think it's 37,000 into the town. If we add the medical services to that, it actually could yield quite a bit of money coming into the town and might pay for itself. At Clyde Brown, there's the need for a .8 school adjustment counselor. We know that the social, emotional needs of the students are, the issues are increasing and at a younger age, and we need that to also deepen our Tier 1 and Tier 2 support, not just Tier 3 services, and the same at the middle school level. School counseling and social, emotional support is critical. We were told not to self-edit, to go ahead and develop our list of things that we need. And these are also what we consider, not just wish lists, but things that really would enhance the programming here in ours. .5 math specialist at the middle school for more intervention, for more work with teachers, a reading specialist. We desperately need another tech specialist to support the great uses that everybody's making use of our technology. And because of the difficulties in scheduling, we have two people doing a tremendous job over 12 grades to try to give our students a robust music program. And that's stretching those two people too thin. We believe it would be a great enhancement to be able to separate the Clyde Brown building and have the scheduling get divorced from what's happening in the middle school and increase music by .7. We could use an additional custodian due to the square footage, the new building is much bigger, and wait till you see it. We're working on the tours for teachers and you'll be very excited. Years ago, we cut the Level 3, what's considered kind of freshman, but it could be middle school athletic teams. Those coaching stipends were cut out of the operational budget and then now paid for by fees. If we were able to reinstate them into our budget, then it would free up the fees for good uniform replacement cycle as well as additional equipment for athletics. The business office, very busy, we have a part-time person, we'd like to add .2 there. And ELL services, we continue to see an increase in students who need English language services and you're supporting their growth. For a total, if we were not editing ourselves, and this, these are not pie in the sky, these are realistic and reasonable requests, would add another 500,000. These are those required expenses I mentioned. We need some new, these are just required. School duty is what I mentioned, is required for qualifying for the CHIPS certification, which actually saves a tremendous amount in the building project. And stormwater tax is a new thing required by the EPA. And the color copier actually is an investment, part of our new lease, that saves money in the long run because it reduces the printing on less efficient, smaller printers. So to have a colored copier would save money in the long run. Our capital needs, in blue, we have what we consider our must-funds and the town funds, at-town meeting, our bus lease, the Medicaid, we pay an organization a small amount, 5,000 to the Except Collaborative to process the Medicaid billing because it's a complex process. It yields, I think, the $37,000, more or less. And our existing computer lease that pays for replacement laptops or replacement devices for teachers as well as for students. We need some engineering done, the HVAC, the air conditioning and the heating systems in this building are whole, the roof is starting to leak, and so we're asking for an engineering study to tell us what the scope of that is and what the cost of that will be. These all go to town meeting and are funded, if there is money, through free cash. Free cash at town meeting does not affect our budget. It's what is available in town for things like fire trucks, police cruisers, the capital needs. Curriculum and instruction, surprisingly, Millis has never, for many years, had a curriculum line item for replacement of, you know, let's say we needed a new textbook series for the social studies. We have to go to town meeting to ask for that. We're replacing, trying to replace lockers upstairs and down in this building, trying to get some new furniture that is more movable and meets the needs of more project-based and personalized learning. Trying to upgrade the wireless network. Football field scoreboard has been hit by lightning a couple times and no longer works. We're thinking we might be able to get that through donations. Uninterruptible power supplies is an issue in the tech office that, as you can imagine, is important for the network. And they do a tremendous job having our network be as reliable as it is for everybody. We need mower and mower and plow for our John Deere tractor. And if there were, these are in priority order, they, a skid steer tractor would be very beneficial for snow plowing and lots of other things, but it's a rather costly item and we don't think there will be enough free cash for that. So in conclusion, I think we all know that our goal is to ensure that students who come to us from many directions, that they all find meaning and inspiration from what they learn. That's our goal. So our commitment is to teach to both the commonalities that students share as human beings and the variability they bring with them as individuals because that's our focus of personalizing learning. And then one last quote, and with Franklin Eleanor Roosevelt said, "The school is the last expenditure upon which America should be willing to economize."
Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you.
Anyone on the committee have questions? Ms. Briggs?
No.
Ms. Gibbons?
Yeah.
Mr. Conroy? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a statement? If you do, you could... If you do, you could please come up to the front, speak into the microphone. Okay. All right, moving on. Please come up to the microphone, yeah.
Thank you, Nancy, for that presentation. I think a lot of us in the audience are wondering about possible reductions, so your presentation did not touch upon that, so we were just wondering, when would we be getting that information? And I was at the meeting that the school committee and the administrators worked together to really try to cut expenses as opposed to staffing, but when it does come to staffing, I think that's what a lot of us here are nervous about, so if you could maybe have an update on that.
We're not going to speak to personnel reductions specifically.
Well, I wouldn't expect right now, but if you could maybe tell me when I would be able to meet with Superintendent Gustafson about that.
We can, we can, we can determine a meeting sometime in April, probably mid to late April.
Okay, okay.
Okay, thank you. Is that it? Okay. Okay. Moving on. The, I have no, nothing under my report, I'd like to move on to subcommittee reports. Elementary School Building Committee, Ms. Gibbons?
Not much new to report since last time. Just a quick recap, the building and the project itself are about 70% complete. Everything remains on target for, hopefully we don't have any snow days, they're probably going to jinx us, but we're almost safe. But for a very quick window to move out of Clyde Brown and into the new school, so that the summer work can start on Clyde Brown and site work, there's quite a bit to do over the summertime, readying for the start of school in September. Furniture and fixtures, a lot of those have been ordered, all of the teams on the school side, administration and school personnel and teachers have done a fantastic job. I was in the school this morning, and books are boxed up in the library, and people are going through the catalog, and I saw a call-out for volunteers to come and help catalog the books, so if you have good computer skills, please contact Patsy. But all continues to go well.
Okay, and then also, there was a standard-based grading, working group, task force, whatever the official title, meeting today, any update on that?
Yeah, the conversations continue to be focused around kind of educating that group on what's currently in place, and there's another meeting scheduled for April, we've met monthly since January, and are kind of working towards some recommendation.
So, when we last had a presentation on that, there was a decision made to make a decision whether standard-based grading was going to go into eighth grade by April vacation. Are we going to be ready to have that discussion prior to April vacation?
I, I would, I would defer to the administration on that one, I will, I'll just give my own opinion, I, I think I heard today, I'm going to correct me if I'm wrong. I, I think I heard today that it might be beneficial to have a little bit more time, so.
What about till, what about if we move the, the decision from the ninth through, to the 30th, April 30th? We have to make a decision at some point.
Yeah.
This has been going on for a long time, so.
Sure, sure.
Why don't we make a decision or have the conversation on April 30th?
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Ms. Gustafson.
Yeah, thank you. I think the working group, from what I've heard, has done a great job pulling together things, and it's a complex issue that if they, we, having met with Mrs. Milton and Ms. Lynn today, the need to make the decision in April is, they, they do not think having a May decision would be detrimental in any way to the work that needs to be done. So if the committee, because we want this to be a collaborative working group recommendation, rather than just an administrative recommendation, so if the working group could have their April meeting and then maybe move, try to move their May meeting up to near the end of April, then they would be ready by the first meeting in May, or the, or the second meeting would be fine. So they're requesting a little bit more time.
I, I would request putting the additional meeting in the month of April, so we can use April 30th as a decision-making date. This was a, this was a deadline that was given to us by the administrators, and this is, this conversation has started last May, and it's continued through, so I, I think if we need an additional meeting, let's try to find a meeting time through, in the month of April, so we can use April 30th.
I think when we gave that April vacation deadline, we, it was off the cuff and not affirmed deadline, I think the, the recommendations will be more thorough and more just well-conceived and able to be vetted at the working group level if we were to delay. But I'll chat with the people involved and see what they can do.
We can have another conversation on the ninth, we can put this on. Jody, would you put this on the agenda under the chairman's report, standard-based grading, so we can have a conversation on the ninth? Thank you. Okay. Anything else, Denise, you good?
Nope.
Okay. Next is correspondence, I think there's a couple Millis Medway articles, is that?
Actually, I don't.
We don't have them.
And the Millis Medway article's there in the folder. They're not online, but that's okay.
All right. There's some, there's some reading to be done.
Some wonderful coverage in the Millis Medway news, which we appreciate, but I would like to, if I may. Oh, thank you. Okay. One was about a Millis student who was featured in the Millis Medway news, as well as on Fox TV, for using CPR. Another, and that was Sean White, Millis High School senior is running, Madeline Padelka is running and raising about $10,000 for Dana Farber. Millis Mohawks Girls Varsity Basketball, near championship, they, they went very deep in the finals and had a fantastic season. There's an article on boys' basketball, John Leduke. And the Millis boosters make an impact on, on March 28th, which is coming up, this Thursday? Is it Friday? Friday, March 28th. The Taste of Millis, the annual Taste of Millis, which is a fundraiser. And then one last article on how Molly Breen, one of our graduates, graduates is now coaching at Blackstone Millville, so, and doing a great job there. And then finally, if I just last, there's the Destination Imagination Tournament that was held, oh, a month ago maybe, in Truismory. The teams did very well, we had a K, kindergarten through second grade team, two elementary, which is third through fifth grade teams, four middle school teams, which is wonderful, and two high school teams. And three of those teams placed first, which means they will compete at the state tournament level, which is held on March 30th at WPI on a Saturday. Those moving on at the middle, middle level in the fine arts challenge are Lily Cassidy, Cynthia Arguiho, Alex Mayher, Jack Borst, Joe Barret, Juliana Roy, Tyler Gerard. At the senior level, for the engineering challenge, it was Ella Borst, Mia Coutts, and Will Beret. And another high school team, the technical challenge, Drew Schultz, Abby Messias, Vivian Hurwitz, and Lily Denman. Congratulations to all those teams, and we should good luck at state.
Okay. All right, school committee announcements, does anyone have any, any announcements? We don't have any old business, new business, we are going to go into a budget working session followed by an executive session, so we can go into executive session from the working session. So the working session is going to be off-camera, so we will be going off-camera. If anyone needs to take any breaks, we can take a break, otherwise we can go right into working session. And the, the room is not available to us.
Correct. All right. So we'll find a room.
We have to find a room. Okay. Okay. So, Dave, we, oh, so, so actually, no, we are.
So we, actually, we need.
Because we're going off.
We need to find, we need to find a room, and I would suggest we determine where that room is now, come back and announce where that is.
Uh-huh.
Or we sit here.
Is there, Jody, is there any way to find a classroom that's open?
Or the conference table at the back of the library?
It has to be open. We have to, it's got to be public.
Which one, 106, is that free?
Stay here. Want to just stay here? Yeah, just stay here. Let's just stay here.
Bob, we're gonna be, we're gonna be outside, we're gonna stay here.
Thank you.
Yes, I'll take a motion to go into working session.
Second.
Motion been moved, and second to go into working session, all in favor?
Aye.
I guess we're now in working session.
Indeed, we are.